Good morning, welcome to the May 26, 2016 zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we'd like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, please turn it off or turn it to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. A public hearing on item number one is opened. Approval of the meeting minutes from April 6th, or 7th, sorry. Linda made the motion to approve, John seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
And the attached garage. That is existing, it's a one-car garage. Future land use shows low-density neighborhood. And it's located north of Fairmont Boulevard, west of Elm Avenue, which are arterial streets on the city's major street plan. Here we have a survey of what's existing on the property. What you'll notice from this is that there is a non-conforming 7.3-foot side yard setback to that northwest side. The minimum required setback is eight feet. When the building permit was issued in 1973, the building permit showed an 11-foot setback. So it isn't even in, today it isn't in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Applicants submitted site plans, so north is going this way. This is where that 3.3 feet and the addition is requested. It's going to bump out the garage four feet to the north and west, and then 52 feet. And this is the existing garage today. So proposing to majorly increase the size of the garage and reduce that side yard setback from already non-conforming 7.3 feet to 3.3 feet. Let me continue through the slides. Here we have, looking at the dwelling, the attached garage. As we know, a lot of single-family dwellings in this city don't have even an attached garage. So they're starting with more than what a lot of people already don't have. Looking across the street, again, an existing single-family dwelling with an attached garage. Looking east along Nevada Street and to the west. And then this is looking back into that, on that northwest side of the property where the, just passed on the neighbor's property, so they have a detached garage in that backyard. So you add a 52-foot-long attached garage back there, you're really bringing these structures much closer together, and the intent of the zoning ordinance is to maintain separation between structures for a number of reasons. As you can see from the staff report, if you do decide to grant this variance, the fire department is requesting that the addition be fire sprinkler-protected and constructed with fire-resistant materials. The other stipulation that I would like to add, which we didn't include in the staff report, is that a surveyed site plan be submitted with the building permit. However, staff's recommendation on this is that the variance request be denied, and that if you're going to grant a variance, that it be for the existing 7.3-foot setback, which is currently non-conforming. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Seeing none, I've got a speaker request form from Jason Krebsbach. Would you like to address the commission?
Sorry, I've never done this, but my garage, the main reason why I'm doing this right now is it's settling and detached from my house. And I would like to try and make it bigger, because it's kind of in-between the two-car garage and the single-car garage already. And to do so, I'd have to try and bring it closer to that four-feet wider, to make it a 22-wide. And then as far as that other garage, it would end before that one starts. I think I measured it out about 11 feet away from that other one. Measuring the smallest corner to corner. So I don't know what else to say, or if there's any other questions on it.
Thank you. Commission, do you have any questions or comments? Karen?
Thank you. I looked at the site plan, and I looked at the neighborhood, and tried to figure out a way to accommodate you, but I truly don't believe that there's any harm in what's happening today, and I don't see a reason that we would need to grant this variance. There is no hardship as far as the use of what you're doing today, and you can continue to use your property as other neighbors have used their property, and I just don't see a reason that we should grant this variance. I do agree with the staff to grant the variance for the current setback that you have today. But I guess I would make that motion that the variance is denied, but that the variance for the current setback is 7.3, I think, is approved.
Karen made the motion to grant only the 7.3-foot setback of the existing structure, not the requested 3.3. Linda seconded that. Galen, you have a comment?
Sure. Maybe two quick questions for the applicant. One is, have you talked with your closest neighbor, and are they in agreement with this? And two is, have you considered a detached setback garage similar to what they have?
I've talked to both my, oh, sorry, all my neighbors, and they all were for it. I mean, no one, especially my one to the right of my property, which it would be the one getting closer to his, he was for it. And as far as detached in the back, I'd have to, once again, tear mine down, but then to get it back there with only that space, I would be back here trying to get another variance. And plus, I was trying to build it and plan this to where it wasn't ruining my view of my site, because I set up on the hill. And the neighbor down the street from me, I wish I should have taken pictures of that, he's got pretty much that exact same layout, but his garage actually goes back 60 feet. So he's going bigger than what mine even was. His sits three feet from the property line.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on the, we have a motion on the floor. Seeing none, take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to deny the 3.3-foot setback and grant the 7.3 existing, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Let's do a roll call quick. Not sure I heard that.
Jobman? Huxette?
No.
Schrank? Ron?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Marshawn? Brewer?
Okay, the motion carries then. Five to two. Thank you, sir. Further items on zoning board of adjustment? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn? Linda made the motion. Karen seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All right. Now we're on to the planning commission agenda for May 26th. Same story on this, if you wish to speak to an item on the planning commission agenda, you can fill out a speaker request form and hand it to the folks on the left side. Consent calendar. Items one through nine have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item 3, 16 UR 010. Item 4, 16 PD 024. Item 8, 16 UR 011. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items, one through nine, that staff would like removed from the consent calendar for separate? Any items that the planning commission would like removed? Number nine. And any items, one through eight, that any audience member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate consideration? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through eight, in accordance with staff recommendations. Jan made the motion. Linda seconded. Okay, we'll continue with the vote. Items one through eight, all those in favor, please say aye. John made the motion to approve item number nine. Linda seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Item number 10.
Item number 10 is a final plan development to allow truck sales and repair on property zone, general commercial district. In particular, it's Eddie's Truck Center, used truck and trailer dealership providing part sales and a service repair shop. Take you through some slides. Property is located on the west side of North Elkvale Road, south of the Interstate 90 intersection on Eglin Street, off of North Turbin Drive. Property to the north, also zone general commercial. Property to the south and west, that zone, General Ag, is, that's more of a holding zone for right now. Currently, property is void of structural development, although they are working on North Turbin Drive at this time. To the north is a gas station, I believe, Mobil. Future land use map shows the property as employment center along North Elkvale Road, which is identified as an entrance corridor. In addition, North Turbin Drive is identified as Collector Street, North Elkvale Road as a principal arterial, and Eglin as a minor arterial. Here we have site plan of the proposed request. North is going to be that way. The applicant is requesting a couple of exceptions. The first being an exception to allow maximum height of 60 feet in lieu of 45 feet for a pole sign, which is located on the northeast side of the property. The applicant's requesting this to provide a little more visibility since they're far further away from the Interstate 90 interchange. However, this is along an entrance corridor, and entrance corridor recommends that we decrease the amount of clutter in the corridor, mainly signage, by promoting using monument signs. However, the current Rapid City zoning ordinance allows a 45-foot-high pole sign, and that's staff's recommendation that the height exception be denied, and that the 45-foot be allowed, even though it's not in compliance with what the comprehensive plan is recommending. Another exception is to reduce the minimum required parking from 228 parking spaces to 188 parking spaces. Those parking spaces which aren't going to be counted are display sales spots located on the north and east sides of the property. The rest of the parking, we have customer and employee parking being provided, based on the type of business this is, Eddie's Truck Center, type of vehicles they're going to have in here, even these longer spots back here, it's more for their clientele that are using this facility. So staff is recommending that the exception to reduce the parking from 228 parking spaces to 188 be approved. The third exception request is to waive the requirement to provide landscaped parking islands within the parking lot. You'll notice, these are islands, however, they're display parking spaces with the type of trucks that are, and the turning radiuses that they have, and snow removal on this site. Providing those landscaped islands, they're going to get run over, they're going to get a lot of salt on them. I'll take you to the next slide, which is the landscaping plan, and they're really adding a lot more landscaping along the perimeter and along the front of the building here, and on the west side along North Turbin Drive. And that beefing up of the landscaping in front of the building and along the perimeter should help negate that, not having those parking islands located in the parking lot. So staff recommends that that exception be approved. Here we have elevation of the proposed facility. This is the signage that's proposed, this is the 60-foot, and this next one shows the 60-foot sign here, and then as well, the 60-foot sign. You notice all the clutter that's in this area. So adding another 60-foot sign to this area would increase the clutter, which is not what is recommended by the comprehensive plan. The fact that the zoning ordinance currently in general commercial district allows a 45-foot-high pole sign, that's what we support for this location. Taking a look from North Turbin Drive, looking south and east. Looking at the work that's happening on North Turbin Drive, looking south. This is property to the west, that's undeveloped. And, you know, the intent being to preserve these types of views, which is why we're, why the comprehensive plan recommends reducing the size of signage. This is looking east from the north end of the property, the Mobil Gas Station and trailer sales is located on the property to the north, and that's what that is showing. And then looking north along North Turbin Drive towards Eglin Street and I-90. This is looking from the interior of the property, on that northeast corner, looking towards the intersection. This is Eglin, and then you've got 90 intersection over there. There's a lot of clutter in this corridor existing. Looking to the east and North Elkvale Road, and looking south and east at North Elkvale Road. And then this is showing you what's the view into this property and to the west and south, and what the comprehensive plan's trying to maintain. So with that, staff recommends that the final plan development be approved, with stipulations noted in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Fletcher at this point? Seeing none, I've got a couple speaker requests, one from John Gillum.
Hi, I'm John. Thank you for your time today. We are asking that you approve the plan development with the exception of the sign. We are requesting a 60-foot sign, because when you come off that intersection there, off the interstate, we would like a truck or a large RV to be able to see the sign from that intersection. You've got about a quarter of a mile between the interstate exit and where you have to turn right on Eglin to access that property. And with a 70-foot tractor-trailer coming off the interstate on a two-lane exit, I think it's safer if the driver can see a sign as they're exiting onto that street. They're just going to have a short period of time to get from the left lane, if they're in the left lane of that turning exit, into the right lane to turn right on Eglin. So that's the primary reason we were asking for a 60-foot sign. It's got to be, how we got to that number is, the architects took a Google Street View picture, which is what you saw there at the end, and that's about an eight-foot-high view, which is about the same height that you would be in a semi-truck viewing out the windshield, and then got that above that DOT sign right there, that otherwise blocks the view of that sign. So that's really all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm open to that.
Thank you. Any questions for John? Seeing none, I've got a request from Eric Haikis as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good morning, Eric Haikis. So I think the owner-operator, John eloquently put our simple request that the sign be a little taller. As a petitioner for the plan development, we are in full support of the plan development and all the stipulations, as Fletcher noted as well, with just that one minor ask that the sign be taller. The rest of it, we're very pleased with and thankful to the planning staff for their assistance with this. So I don't have any other comments that go beyond what John had stated as the rationale for the taller sign, so.
Okay, thank you.
Forty-four employees as a result of this project, is that right, John? Forty-four full-time equivalent staff? It meets the very description that Fletcher mentioned, that we're creating jobs as an employment facility, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question, and apologize for getting late. I had a little trouble getting online. The nature of the additional 15-foot in height and the sign, are there some online photos? I'm just not getting there with this new website. I apologize. Are there some photos of this? Or in the sign code, is the applicant going to be able to get some visibility from 90? I assume that the request for the variance was to be able to provide a visual for the business from Interstate 90? Do I understand that correctly?
Mr. Chair? If I might, so they did show what the sign would look like, and that bottom picture actually shows that you can see the 60-foot sign above the other signage, and structural obstructions, and it appears they're on a northern end of Elkvale Road looking south. Fletcher mentioned this in his presentation, and I just want to point this out. With the comprehensive plan that has been adopted by the city, along an entrance corridor, pole signs are not recommended at all, only ground-mounted mount signs. As a compromise, we looked at this, and we acknowledged the fact that there need to be some visual guidance into the site, and so allowing the 45-foot-high pole sign is bringing to you a recommendation that is a compromise, and that does require special consideration, because it's not in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. The concern is, is that if we grant a 60-foot-high sign for this, you will continue to see requests up and down Elkvale Road from other property owners, noting that we've granted it here. What we have taken into account, and what DOT has also confirmed, is that with technology today, whether it be a GPS system or a smartphone, there's very few businesses that aren't, you can't have guidance to without signage. We do acknowledge, though, that these big trucks need to see in advance where that turn is, and so the 45-foot-high sign was the compromise that we brought to the table.
Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to say almost exactly the same thing that Vicki said. I think an entrance corridor, it's too bad that some of those other signs aren't already down low. I've traveled quite a bit around the nation, and there's so many beautiful towns, and you go into any town that doesn't have signage or billboards, and it's, you can find your way around, and I'm not young, and I can do a smartphone and figure out how to get someplace. I figured that, you know, the rest of the world is going to be able to do that also. I just, I think if one, as Vicki mentioned, if we have one person that has that higher sign, the guy that's going to be farther south is going to want another higher sign, and pretty soon, it's going to look like Mount Rushmore Road, and we're trying to fix that now. So I support the staff's recommendation, and I'm going to make a motion that we approve this item with the stipulations as stated.
Karen made the motion to approve with the staff stipulations. Jan seconded that motion. Is there further discussion on the item from the commission, or on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is a final plan development overlay to expand an industrial structure, in particular, properties located at 317 Maple Avenue, and is the location of Crescent Electric Supply Company.
and is the location of Crescent Electric Supply Company. Omaha Street to the northeast Boulevard to the west. And property's zoned light industrial district. It's just off of Omaha. It's in an industrial corridor, located railroad tracks in this area, and then commercial corridor along Omaha Street to the north. This is aerial view of the current state of the property. There's structure located here and on this backside, which is storage. The applicant's proposing to construct an addition onto the west end of the building, which will be more warehousing and will include a truck dock, which will be located on the property. The future land use plan identifies the property as mixed-use commercial with Omaha and East Boulevard as revitalization corridors. And East Boulevard and East Omaha are identified as principal arterials as well as East Main and East St. Joe to the south. This is the site plan, showing what's being proposed on the property. Currently, there's a lot of, there's paved area back here that's parking. Applicant's proposing to do that as outdoor storage in lieu of parking. One of the exception requests is to waive the requirement to provide a screening fence around the outdoor storage. Currently, there is chain-link fence. And as I noticed yesterday, there is some, there are slats on this north end of the chain-link fence. But the applicant's requesting that the requirement to provide screening for outdoor storage be waived. To the north, we've got this alley here. We've got railroad right-of-way to the south, industrial corridor in this area. There's not really that need to screen from Omaha Street or other businesses. And what's, so what's there today? It provides the security that they need. Staff recommends that the exception to waive the screening requirement be waived because they're providing that security fence already and the fact that it's in this back area. The applicant is also requesting an exception to reduce the minimum required parking from 26 parking spaces to six parking spaces. As you'll notice, there's parking shown in this area. That is located in the railroad right-of-way. And the applicant is leasing that area from the railroad. The applicant's actually proposing to pave, it's currently gravel. The applicant is proposing to pave the parking and provide some landscaping along that south side of the building. So there will be that parking as long as the railroad lease stands up. And it appears that they've been using it for a number of years and will continue to. There is existing parking that backs into the right-of-way along that east side of the building. However, it isn't, since it backs into the right-of-way, it doesn't comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And then they're proposing some angled parking along that north side of the building, which will be the, the six parking spaces that do meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Staff does recommend that the parking reduction be approved because they're, they are going to pave that parking in that railroad right-of-way and provide additional landscaping. And it's really an improvement to this property overall. The other exception, if we go back to the aerial, you can see that about 96% of this lot is, is either paved or hard-gravelled or has structures on it. So the, in the expansion, this gravelly, gravelled area is going to be, have a structure over it. The applicant's requesting an exception to allow a maximum lot coverage of 96% in lieu of the maximum allowed 75%. With the proposed improvements to this property, the addition of landscaping along this northeast side and the south side, paving of the parking so that we don't have gravel parking close to our downtown. The general improvements to this area, including moving, this is their decal truck right there, moving that truck from being, blocking the alley currently today when they're, in their unloading to being located on the property. Staff recommends that the exception to allow 96% lot coverage be approved. The next exception is to reduce the minimum required landscaping from 35,507 points to 14,500 points. Now, this is coming from the fact that there are zero landscaping points located on the property today. The applicant's actually bringing more, or bringing landscaping to the property. It's gonna number 14,500 points. It's definitely an improvement to what is existing today. And staff recommends that the exception be approved. And the, let's see. There, the, the final exception is to reduce the minimum required side yard setback from 25 feet to 17 feet for the dock addition on that north side. The applicant did request an exception to reduce the side yard setback along that south side. However, the zoning ordinance says that if the addition does not further encroach into the setback, you don't need to get a variance from it. You can further, you can put an additional onto a building as long as it doesn't further encroach. And in fact, the most it encroaches is at zero at that east, southeast corner of the property, along the property line. So the only exception for setbacks they're asking is for this addition with, for the truck dock. And as noted before, getting that truck out of the alley so it's not blocking the alley is definitely an improvement. And the fact that it's, that this is the back of a commercial strip along Omaha and being on the alley, it should have a minimal impact and should actually be an improvement to the operations on the property. So I think that's all the exceptions. This is the layout of the building. Improvements to the facade. They're proposing to add new signage or replace existing signage with new signage on the building. This is the existing look at the property. Looking east, looking south towards St. Joe and Main Street. And this is that railroad and industrial corridor back here. Looking north, along Maple and the Sinclair Gas Station at the corner of Omaha. This is looking down that alley. I mean, even today, or yesterday, there were trucks back there working on the, the poles. And here you can see some of the existing fence. But usually semi-trucks will come onto the site and, and, or not onto the site, but come into the alley and have to unload there. And this is that parking on that south side of the building, which is currently gravel. And they're proposing to pave and add some landscaping along the edge of the building. And a look at the railroad right-of-way, south and looking towards the east and the industrial corridor. So the fact that this is a existing business, which has been, I believe, located at this property since 1948. And, you know, the improvements they're making, including adding landscaping, paving that parking just south of a revitalization corridor. It's a good project, and staff recommends that the final plan development be approved with the stipulations noted in the staff report.
Thank you, Fletcher. We have a speaker request from Rob Schlemgyn.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. I'll withhold any comments until there's any questions or anything that we need to address. I think the Planning Commission has covered this very well. And appreciate your time this morning. I guess the only one comment, as Fletcher noted, Crescent Electric has been here since 1948. And this is really the first major revitalization of their building that they've done. And I think it'll be a big improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? John made the motion to approve per staff recommendations. Linda seconded that motion. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 12.
Thank you. Item number 12 is 16 UR 013, a conditional use permit to allow a microbrewery to be located in the central business district. The Hay Camp Brewing Company currently located at the Creamery Building at 201 Main Street has outgrown their existing facility, and they're proposing to relocate to a new, larger location. If you'll recall, in February of this year, staff brought forward an ordinance amendment to allow microbreweries as a conditional use in the central business district. This was in anticipation of this particular project. The ordinance became effective in April 29th of this year. And the applicant brought in their conditional use permit request shortly thereafter. Some details about what they're proposing to do. One of the items that they are, were proposing in their original operations plan was to include a sidewalk cafe to be located along both Kansas City and along Sixth Street, which I'll point out in a moment. Just wanted to let you know that those sidewalk cafes could not be considered as a part of this application. They do require a separate application, which is administratively reviewed for that use. They would be, we would anticipate they'll be bringing that in in the future, should this get approved. Looking at the zoning map of the property, the property is located central business district. Karen was kind enough to point out to me that there is a moment, or there's a paragraph in our project report in the section regarding on-sale liquor uses, item number two, which lists the, this property as being on the fringes of the downtown district and anticipated to be downtown soon. Obviously, that's not the case. The property is already, already zoned central business district. What I meant to say is that it's on the fringes of the downtown. And there is high-density residential zoning located about a half a block to the south of this property. Aerial view of the property. You should be familiar with this building located southwest at the intersection of Sixth and Kansas City. It was formerly the Rapid City Regional Hospital Laundry Facility. So before that, I believe it was a car dealership. Future land use shows this is appropriate for the downtown. There are some public, a mix of public and some urban neighborhood or residential uses in vicinity. Look at the major street plan. Fifth Street, Mount Rushmore Road, St. Joseph and Main Street are all principal arterial streets. This is located within a regional activity center identified in the city's comprehensive plan. So look at what the applicant is proposing to do here. I should note that during review of this application, the Rapid City Police Department noted that there were several different, or a number of different, public uses and religiously affiliated uses in proximity to this use. And also noted that in our history, it's unprecedented for a blanket on-sale use to be approved for an entire structure. In this case, 10,000 square feet. We brought these concerns to the applicant. And as a result, he brought forth an amended operations plan, which identified use in, the use of the area. And it's included in the links in this project report, but graphically, we wanted to show it to you here. The on-sale use would be limited to this area. That does, I should point out, include a theater space here, the microbrewery production facilities here, and the taproom here. And then there's additional space for a cafe here, which they anticipate bringing in in the future. I should also point out that they are proposing to have occasional events located outside in the existing parking lot located there. As you know, in the central business district, there is no on-street or off-street parking requirements provide, to consider for requests in the central business district. As such, any use that they would propose to be located in the parking lot would not trigger additional parking and would not decrease the amount of parking that they were providing on the site or that they would be required to provide on the site. Look at the signpost on the property. I think most people would agree, this is one of the jewels of the downtown. The curved window facade on the corner, really impressive. This, we see this mixed use of the cafe, the theater, the brewery, the office space is a tremendous adaptive reuse of the, the building, especially along a corridor where we could all, I think, definitely agree, we need to see more reinvestment and more uses in the future. Looking west along Kansas City Street, a couple things to note. We are in proximity to a couple churches. And the Hope Services Center, which is providing rehabilitative services to low-income individuals, including treatment facilities. This is a look at Sixth Street pointing to the south. Rapid City High School there in the background. And then across the street, Catholic Social Services is also located across Sixth Street. This is looking, I'm sorry, north along Sixth, towards the core of the downtown. We really see this new use as an extension of the, all the really great work that we've seen coming in across Sixth Street on the last several years. Again, some of the, the Hope Services Building located adjacent to the west of the property. This is the, a look at the parking lot as it exists today. As I said, they are proposing to have some outdoor events in this location. When they're not having outdoor events, it will be used as parking. They will be providing handicap accessibility and ADA parking spaces in this parking lot when events are not being held. I should also note here that any events that are being held in this space, access to those events would be restricted to the inside of the building. So a customer or a patron would need to go inside, verify their age, that they are able to consume alcoholic beverages or be in a location where there were service of that before they would be able to then proceed outside into a festival space or the outdoor event space. This is a look on Sixth Street from the rear of the building, looking north. This is part of the area that they are proposing to have for potential sidewalk cafe. Although, as I noted previously, that's not being reviewed as a part of this. Would come in in a future application. I'll look at that curved front that I mentioned earlier at the corner, just to show you a little bit, and then there to a better view of the structure as a whole. The applicant worked with city staff, including Captain Rude from the Rapid City Police Department, to examine the operation of their facility, to kind of pare down the use to those areas where it would make the most sense to allow an on-sale liquor establishment, as well as establish the operations plan of the facility to ensure that security was being provided and that the event spaces, all the spaces in the facility were being secured and, and being controlled by the applicant to ensure that alcohol sales are being done responsibly, the service is being done responsibly. So we commend the applicant for the work that he's done to try and to mitigate potential adverse impacts of his use. However, we do understand that there are a lot of sensitive uses in the area, a lot of public uses, a lot of uses designed for social services. We do have a speaker here today that, from one of the area churches, that wanted to make a statement in regards to that. So I encourage you to listen to what he has to say. However, based on the operation of the facility, based on the adaptive reuse of this building located in a corridor, regional activity center in an area where we want to see reinvestment, staff is recommending that this application be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. And we are available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Robert. I do have a speaker request from Greg Kroger.
Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to this matter. I'm Greg Kroger. I serve as lead pastor for First United Methodist Church. And I speak today... and I speak today not only on my behalf, but also on behalf of our church through our Leadership Council, which is our primary governing body of First United Methodist Church. I'm here this morning not to speak in opposition to this proposed development, but neither can I speak, you know, as a proponent, given our longstanding historic statements and positions as a denomination regarding our solidarity to be in ministry with those who are at greatest risk for dealing with addictive conditions. So what we are here, though, is to say we're wanting everyone to be a good neighbor in the neighborhood. And as we're seeking the best for Rapid City in the immediate area around First United Methodist Church, the Hope Center, and this proposed development, the library, we're looking for everyone to be a part of caring for the neighborhood. As we've had a chance to visit with Mr. Papendick, he has shared that it is their desire to be a good neighbor, and we expect that of them, just as we expect that of ourselves. Just a few things that I want to add to the material that has been included in the Plan Development Project Report, which, by the way, we've had a chance to review and do our best to understand. To be a good neighbor in this area, I think all of us need to realize the impacts on operations for the church and for the Hope Center could be more than what are currently anticipated. A number of weeknights, in particular Wednesday nights, are very, very busy in that part of our downtown area as there are activities at our congregation, as well as other churches in the area. And should operations expand to include Wednesday nights, parking may be more of an issue than what is currently anticipated. Several nights of the week, we have significant numbers of children, youth, and adults involved in activities at the church. Practically every weeknight, 12 step groups are meeting at the church, and every weekday, dozens if not hundreds of persons battling addiction will be visiting the Hope Center next door. For the care and concern of those most vulnerable to adverse and unforeseen consequences, please be aware and proactive in safeguarding the needs of the neighbors. Our position is we want to be a good neighbor, to expand hospitality and welcome. We also extend the invitation to please join us in caring for the concerns of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Questions or comments? Karen? Oh, sorry, John was up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few comments. One, as the first president and CEO of Destination Rapid City and the development of revitalization downtown some years ago, I worked with the Leadership Council, and I appreciate the comments that you made this morning. We all have to be good neighbors downtown. But I just wanted to comment that in the design and the business plan created for downtown, I visited, had the opportunity to visit a number of cities that have gone through revitalization and repurposing buildings. So that particular part of the presentation about buildings that have unique architecture and part of the downtownscape are really important. One of our consultants, when Destination was formed, was a group out of New York that works all over the world in, it's called Projects for Public Spaces, and you can look them up. They've done impressive work all over the world. It was interesting when they visited Rapid City on the front end to create one of the first master plans for us in that work, saw Sixth Street as a, as the axis downtown. Many of us think Main and St. Joe with three lanes of Speedway are the axis. It turns out that Sixth Street is the axis. So it's really important to me, and I hope to the city, that further development along that street will bring all the good things that revitalization bring to communities and revitalization of downtown spaces. To that end, I'm going to just say that I, I think the good neighbor speech from both sides and recognition that those occur will work, and it was the observation of the people from Projects for Public Spaces that as the space becomes more used and more active, is that just the people in that space will become better neighbors, not just the owners of facilities, but the people that frequent, whether they're there for the Wednesday night program or whether they're there for entertainment and recreation. So with that, because of an interest that I have aside in the project, I'm going to have to recuse myself from the vote, but I think my comments are germane to the discussion. I appreciate your comments this morning, Robert. Thank you.
Linda?
My biggest concern is parking. I happen to attend that church, and I already have not attended meetings because I do not feel comfortable walking over a half a mile and to get to a church meeting. So that's my big issue. I'm not against the thing, but the parking is an issue, and so, and I don't know the solution to that, but I just want to make that comment because parking is an issue.
Thank you, Linda. Karen?
Thank you. I, I was around when the building was the Osmobile dealer in, and it's a beautiful building, and I'm glad that it's going to be used again to something that's more retail. I just think that's just a beautiful building. I have some concern with the Hope Center because as a member of Trinity, and I, we serve a lot of the homeless food every day, and I know they go from there to the Hope Center, so there's a lot of traffic through there. And, and it is kind of disconcerting that this would be an alcohol establishment. It'd be better, to me, it was a bakery or something, but, but I think the establishment that's there is a trend that is, is popular, and I think it'll bring a lot more people into that area, and maybe that's a good thing. We'll see more people using Sixth Street and, and the facilities around there, and they'll get a chance to see what's going on at the Hope Center, so hopefully that's, that would be a positive. So I am supporting the application, and, and there is some concern, as we've noted, with the alcohol and the homeless and the parking. I know there is some concern, but hopefully everybody will work together, and this will be a good project. So, thank you.
Jan?
I, I just, just want to note that I work for the Firehouse Brewery and direct the theater there. And I've discussed with the, with the management, the owners, about other microbreweries, and it's both their feeling and mine that quality microbreweries and theater only increase the patronage for all of us, and so I would move to approve with the exceptions, with the staff. Yeah, noted.
Second.
Jan made the motion to approve with stipulations. Karen seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Yep, John is recusing from the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Karen's with John abstaining. Item 13, I think. I have 11 on my sheet.
Good morning. The next item before you is item number 16, TI 003, and it's an application to amend an existing project plan for tax increment district number 70. It's for a property located along Highway 16 in Katron Boulevard generally. So here's the, here's the existing tax increment district boundary. It was originally created in 2008 so that a 160-unit residential development could come forward by extending the sewer line down to this area. Originally, the proposal was to extend the sewer line from Fifth Street. However, with some reconstruction of Katron Boulevard, this portion of the sewer line was included in a separate project. So when the project plan was approved in 2012, it included the extension of this sewer line, sewer main, excuse me, from Katron down to the extension of Moon Meadows with a traffic signal in the future to accommodate the needs. And then there were also some provisions for some additional lane improvements on 16 to get into Moon Meadows to the west of Katron Boulevard. So with this, this is an aerial photo from 2015, which actually shows the alignment of the sewer line and that it has been constructed. It shows the improvements of Moon Meadows, which have been constructed. And here you have a picture of Moon Meadows looking from the east to the west. And then one more view from Moon Meadows looking to the north and the alignment of the sewer. Now, one of the provision, one of the requests before you today is to realign some of the project, existing project costs so that they more closely align with the actual expenses that occurred. But the applicant is also proposing to construct two regional detention ponds. One is about in this location, and the other one is farther north that you can't really see in there. So here is a copy of the proposed public improvements map. These are the two pieces that they would like to add to the project plan. This piece has already been done. This one has been done. These have actually been done. And then the signal, of course, won't be installed until the warrants, traffic warrants are met. So this is the, a copy of the applicant's information and how they want to realign the costs. When I was looking through this, it was really hard to tell how much we were actually spending on those regional detention ponds. So I realigned the allocation so that you can actually see how much it's going to cost for the regional detention ponds. However, our existing tax increment district also identifies that if you amend a project plan and it has phases, there is an additional $20,000 that has to be included for the administrative fees. And so I also included that information so that you can clearly see, you know, where the costs are being shifted and what it's really going to cost. So let's look at this portion right here that identifies really what the total Phase 1 and Phase 2 are going to be. So they've shifted the costs around. I've taken out all of the costs from the necessary and convenient. They've taken out all of the contingency costs. The applicant had proposed to reduce some of the financing costs because there's some development that's occurring in, inside the district that will help pay this off a little sooner. And so with an amendment, generally, if you don't adjust the bottom line total, there is no adjustment in the base valuation. However, when you add an item to the project plan that wasn't previously included in there, you can still adjust the items, but the base valuation is redetermined. And that, to me, is a critical piece because we're going to talk about that in just a second. So recently, you've also approved two other tax increment districts, generally wholly inside the existing tax increment district number 70. The first one that was approved was tax increment district number 77. That's called Buffalo Crossing. They have some current development moving forward. They have a gas station right here. They have a motel about right there. They have about 60 housing units that they're working toward. And then here on the other side is Black Hills Corp's regional headquarters. Actually, it's their corporate headquarters. So with an overlapping TIF district, all of those revenues generated with inside TIF district 70, whether they're in another district or not, all of those revenues go toward paying the first district. As soon as that district is paid off, then the revenues generated inside this district, this district, excuse me, go toward paying off TID 77. And then any revenues generated in this district go toward paying off tax increment district number 77. So I mentioned before that state law does allow you to adjust your line item costs, but if there's a new item that's included, then the base has to be reevaluated. And when I was working on the project plan, originally, I put the preliminary information together. The base valuation was 24 million. When I did it a couple of weeks ago, the base value is now 29 million. And originally, and, and that might not be anything, you know, of value, but the base valuation increased by 6.8 million, and now that's $148,000 per year in revenue, or about 2.78 million per year for the life of the district. So then I also provided for you some revenue information. This is the revenue from Buffalo Crossing. This is the revenue from Black Hills Corp. And in here, I identified the lack of the existing increment. When we reevaluate, those revenues that were generated since its inception will now be sent back to the taxing districts. And so here is where we actually start generating revenue, is 2020 because of the redetermination. So here is a spreadsheet of the payout for TID 70. These are the, the existing revenues. This year here represents a lack of revenue because of the redetermination, and then we start generating revenue towards the payoff. So just so you know, this is the proposed apartment complex, and you've already seen one application moving forward. This, over here on this side is 16. Here we have the extension of Moon Meadows. This eventually will tie into Healing Way up to Katron Boulevard. It's a 160-unit apartment building. And we've not seen a building permit for that yet. And generally, it's about a two-year cycle, construction cycle. So when you looked at those revenues before here, this is why the revenues were anticipated to be actually received in 2020. And of course, with all tax increment districts, if the revenues are generated ahead of the projections, then the district just pays off sooner, which is, you know, always a good thing. And there's always a question about how much value we have, property we have included in a tax increment district because there's a state law that you can't have more than 10% of your taxable valuation within a community that is included in a tax increment district. And this is our estimate from the end of December. We know that there are two other districts that have been included, but still, that's still, excuse me, that still brings us to about 3% is all of our taxable value within a district. So there are a couple of options for you. You can approve it as amended. You can approve it in part. You can approve the amendment with revisions. You can approve it to, you can continue it to allow the applicant to provide more information if, if necessary, or you can move to deny the amendment. One of the questions that came up from the Tax Increment Committee was have we ever reallocated funds and added any line items to different tax increment districts? So this is a spreadsheet from tax increment district number 41. And actually, there have been four revisions for this one. This is where we constructed Fifth Street. It started with a valuation of 1.3 million, several changes along the way. And so the last revision, the base valuation was increased to 11 million. So we have amended project plans to change the line items, as you can see here, to, you know, more accurately reflect the cost. But then we've also add- know, more accurately reflect the cost, but then we've also added different line items as time went on to capture that increment. So the proposal in front of you is to amend the district or the project plan so that we can include the regional drainage ponds. There've been some deductions on some of the items because they didn't cost as much, there've been some increases anticipated just based on, you know, for example, the mobilization was increased because if they're going to go back out and construct a couple drainage ponds, they need to, that cover that cost. But then also, the bottom line does not change, as you can see. Are there any questions so far?
I've got a light from John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support this realignment as proposed, and just wanted to comment that I happen to live downrange from drainage. This is right at the peak, it's sort of the continental divide of drainage for the west side coming down, and so those issues are something I know that the county and the city deal with a lot. People just, it's the way it drains out here. So if, I'm presuming that the engineering and the requirement for the drainage, it's passed all of the previous vetting, that I'm in support of that, not only for this project, but because it, there are consequences downstream if drainage isn't controlled in the project. I think this is an appropriate use. So with that, I'm going to move for approval as presented in the first option that you gave us, as proposed.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add one thing. Our Public Works Department and Engineering have looked at this, and, you know, even though these are regional ponds, if this item were not approved, each development is responsible for onsite drainage. So even though we're looking at regional ponds, if the regional ponds weren't constructed, everybody still has to put their detention onsite, but Public Works has looked at this, and it does generally fall in our drainage plan.
Thank you. Galen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, we got a motion on the floor from John. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Jan seconded.
Okay, just a quick question for Patsy. How does this differ from the item we had two meetings ago? We had very similar, maybe I'm just not following it, but I'm just looking at, it's basically the same item, only a little higher cost this round, so did something change between the last request and this one, or what's different?
What happened at the last meeting is there's a process in our tax increment policy that the TIF committee looks at it. If they recommend approval, then staff makes the change and presents it to Planning Commission. The TIF committee didn't recommend approval, so what happens then is the applicant appealed it to you folks, and you directed us to make the changes. So you're actually seeing the project plan revised before you today, before you were just hearing the applicant's request to direct staff to make the changes. So it's generally the same information. I, you're right, I did shift the spreadsheet around to accommodate looking at how much it's really going to cost for the regional ponds, and then to include that administrative fee per the policy. So it is the same thing that you saw last time, only now there's a project plan.
Okay. Yeah, I would just notice there's a little higher cost this round, so that's all.
Thanks, Galen. The, I had one question. When you spoke about the valuation being raised due to the amendment and lost revenue, that's, it's not really lost, the revenue, it goes to the taxing authorities as it would typically without a TIF, right?
Correct. Correct. Right now, today, the end of the year 2015, the revenues were about forty-seven thousand a year. That's the amount that's going to be sent back to the, all of the taxing entities, but because there's a new valuation, a new base valuation established, we started, the increment actually starts at anything over twenty-nine million now, instead of twenty-two million.
Sure, so the, I forget the number, but the, okay, there it is. The revenue loss you're talking about is just, it's going into different buckets. It's not going into the TIF to pay the increment, you know, the incremental costs, it's just going to the school, the county, the city as it would normally.
So, correct. So before, the taxing entities were losing, they weren't losing, they were, they were shifting funds, so everything, any revenue generated on this twenty-two million before, you know, this amendment is approved, was actually going to the taxing districts. So now, any revenue generated on twenty-nine million will be sent to the taxing entities, and so we start the new revenue generation on the twenty-nine million instead of still capturing that six million to go toward the TIF payoff. So the taxes are still collected, now the taxing entities will get, you know, their share of twenty-nine million.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? The motion's on the floor from John to approve as presented. Jan seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries with Karen abstaining. Any discussion items, staff items? Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Karen made the motion.
Second.
Jan seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Clear. Chair.